Should be good to begin, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is David Fries. I'm the mayor of Tongonoxi. I'm calling to order this January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of the Kansas City, or of Tongonoxi City Council. Mr. Porter, would you note that I am present and call the roll, please?
Mr. Dale.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Donnelly.
Here.
Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Ms. McCutcheon.
Here.
All present, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two on the agenda is the approval of minutes where we approved the minutes from the previous meeting from January third. Any conversation about those minutes?
Motion to approve is presented.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item three on the agenda is the consent agenda where we review the bill payments from the previous period. Is there any conversation about the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thanks, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Under old business, normally this is where we discuss any topic that the public would like to speak. They didn't want to sign up to speak before the deadline.
No signups, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to new business. Resolution zero-one, twenty-three, zero-three, consider modifications to the two thousand twenty-three Kansas Department of Commerce Building a Stronger Economy Base 2.0 Grant Application Materials. Mr. Brackovich.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. You probably recall that about a year ago, we, the Department, Kansas Department of Commerce announced that as part of their recovery funds, they were allocating one hundred million dollars into this base grant, what is now referred to as Base Grant 1.0, for projects throughout the state. And the loose rules are that it's related to some economic development activity, and cities or entities have a need for a variety of eligible costs, including things like infrastructure, which is what our original application was for, the pursuit of three million dollars in grant with a one million dollar local match that represented the twenty-five percent minimum local match that the program called for. Needless to say that we weren't awarded any funds in that first round, and fortunately, the Department of Commerce received a second allocation, although it's only half of what was in the first round. So Base 2.0 was announced on January third, and Commerce indicated they had fifty million dollars for this go-around. Some of the rules, well, January third, it was announced, the deadline for submittal is January thirty-first, so really tight timeframe to get something submitted. And they anticipate awards being announced no earlier than, I believe, it's March, March fourteenth. So a little bit of a lag between the submittal deadline and award announcement. So some of the rules, if you were awarded funds in the first round, you're not eligible the second go-around. One thing that Mr. Porter and I noticed is we were reviewing awards that were handed out in the first round, is big projects had submitted for funding through the development entity that was doing the project. So maybe there was a project in Kansas City, Kansas. The Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas didn't apply. The project applied. Same thing for a big project in the De Soto area. So the eligibility requirement is not based upon a project receiving funding. It's the entity that's receiving the funding. So we anticipate that there will be a lot of cities, even though their projects may have been awarded money, will come back around this funding time and say, well, now the city is pursuing funds related to this project. So we're yet to see, there's a second, there's only been one webinar on this. There's a second one tomorrow afternoon. Maybe that'll shake out a little bit differently, but that's the way it appears, the program's set up now. We plan to once again submit for the wastewater treatment plant, Phase One. We know what our costs are. We will, a little bit later, we'll come back to three options that staff has put together. There's a bit of a look-back period that Commerce is allowing to kind of show how much you've already spent on a project, and that can be included as part of your local match. And so we've structured three options for your consideration. But before we dive into that, we wanted to present you with some information tonight that is, I think, based on some of the input we got from Councilman Donnelly and Councilman Partridge at the last meeting of, we have a lot of infrastructure projects going. How are we tracking everything? And I think Mr. Partridge was asking about, well, we've talked a little bit about cash funds or cash available, how much is there? And so I believe that the dais for each of you is a hard copy of something we'll put on the screen here shortly, that talks about a variety of funding sources that are available based on either utility revenue accounts, all the way down to the EDA grant that's helping to pay for the water tower project, ARPA funds, sales tax dollars, as well as just general fund balance as well. And we've tried to identify what funds are available. Anything that indicates funds available, it does, at least if there's fund balance goals that are applied to that, it's already protecting that. So in the utility fund, if there's a thirty percent fund balance goal, the dollars that are reflected as available funds already account for ensuring that we're protecting that thirty percent. Same thing for the fifteen percent on general fund. So that's in the chart to the left. On the chart in the right is then we try to identify all of, if you read the blue across the top, all of the infrastructure projects that we've either identified and included in the budget, identified in the budget, and have phased cost approach to it, and current projects that are already underway. And we've tried to then allocate into those where the funding sources for those specific projects comes from. So it's kind of marrying, what are the funding sources? How are we using those currently? What's in the balance? And it's all part of that conversation we've had of how staff is developing recommendations, again, based on the variety of funding sources, what is the least restrictive, and how we, can you best use a variety of those funds, and ultimately still protect things like general fund, which, you know, tends to be the catch-all for other projects that don't meet specific requirements. So we'd be happy to go through that in detail. I've kind of viewed this more as a data point for the city council, that you have this information available as a reference point as we move forward and have discussions. But if you want to take a second or two to look at it, and if you have any specific questions, Dan, or Mr. Porter, I would be happy to walk through that. But I did want to, like I said, I wanted that mainly as a reference point for you as we move forward throughout this year, and whether it's pursuing grants like Base or other funding discussions like we'll have a little bit later tonight about the temp notes and decisions we made at the last meeting. If there's no questions on that, and we can come back to it, I'll go to the next list, and I don't know if they, do you have hard copies of the options? Great. Thank you, Dan. So the options that we've prepared related to the wastewater treatment plant, Phase One and 1A, which for the purpose of Base Grant, we're just going to call Phase One, and try not to confuse anybody at the state. One quick minor point, the other thing Dan and I noticed when we were reviewing projects that were previously awarded, they specifically included the name of an economic development project in the title of their application. So that's kind of a limited field. In our original submittal, we titled it Expansion of the City of Tongonoxi Wastewater Treatment Plant. This time around, we'll amend that to say Expansion of Wastewater Treatment Plant Due to the Hill's Pet Nutrition Project at the Tongonoxi Business Park. And the narrative gives us an opportunity to talk not just about Hills, but Unilock and other projects we're pursuing in the area, and the way it opens up a lot of that whole corridor for additional development. So that's just, I just wanted you to be aware of that if you see it later, and wondering why the title is the way it is. But there's three options listed there, and so some of those options go back to what I talked about earlier, capturing some of that, some of those expenses that we've already incorporated. And actually, the resolution that's in the packet tonight that Anna prepared does a really good job of going back in the history and capturing all of the investment that the city has made, including back, going back to two thousand and nine, when the property at the business park was originally acquired. And so trying to show the state that for two reasons. One, our investment goes beyond what we're asking for in this grant. And secondarily, I think it's important that the state's going to want to see if we're going to include things like the KDHE Low Interest Rate Loan as part of how we're going to get to our twenty-five percent match or more, whatever you direct us to do tonight, that we're very specific about what that allocation is. So even though we are pre-approved for up to a five million dollar loan, obviously, if we can get a grant to cover some share of that cost, we won't pursue the full amount of the loan. I mean, we still love to have a low interest rate loan. But I think the Department of Commerce, based on the feedback I've gotten from staff there, is going to want to see that, that level of specific detail in terms of how dollars are allocated, whether it's part of a local match or part of the grant request. So having said all that, Option One includes all of the project costs, including the soft costs that we approved with the BG contract, a meeting, at the last meeting, I believe. And we're not really indicating what the funding source is for that. We've talked a lot about using our ARPA funds, and if that's the route we go, that's great. But including all the costs, we're at that a little over five point six million. Option Two is the construction costs only. And again, this would be for Phase One and 1A. And if, just for the benefit of anyone that might be listening, or for us, 1A, we asked BG to go look, once we knew we were eligible for the five million low-interest loan, the equipment cost and construction cost of what we had just included in Phase One, we still had an ability, there was, we weren't going to use all of that five million. So we asked them to go look at Phase Two, and is there any equipment that's allocated in Phase Two that would make sense to buy now as part of the construction activity, or the transition between Phase One and Phase Two? So that's the recommendation they came back with, and that's what I'm referencing as Phase 1A. So Option Two, though, includes all of that. Construction only is four point six seven five million. And then Option Three is just the construction for Phase One only at three point eight seven five. The two columns to the right of those options indicate how city share of increments of thirty percent, thirty-five, and forty percent, what that looks like as a total balance versus what we would then ask for from the grant, and the, I guess reciprocal percentages associated with those. The reason we targeted that thirty to forty percent, again, was with some initial feedback we got from the Department of Commerce staff, encouraging any submittal to be above the twenty-five percent minimum, which is consistent with what they told us as one of the critiques of our original application, was that we only met the minimum requirement. And then kind of a suggestion to not get into the fifty percent or greater local match for fear of getting criticisms that, well, then you may not actually need these grant funds. And so, again, that's, I know it's a lot of detail to offer you there between the three different options. I think from my opinion and working on this, I think it would be appropriate to go with Option One and include all the project costs to show how much we've invested. But certainly, it's, unless something comes out of the webinar tomorrow that would lead us to believe there's a different path, or we should work this from a different angle, I think any one of these three options is going to be fine. One of the things that the Department of Commerce staff said during the original webinar, or Webinar One, a couple of weeks ago on this, was that if they were going to ballpark submittals, there's a ceiling amount of twenty-five million that any one project can apply for. But the, there was a specific question asked for, based on the city size, or based on the project size, is there a general rule of thumb for how much money you should ask for? And again, just as a general rule, they said, you know, really small cities, based on their population, could ask for funding up to maybe around two million dollars. Cities of the size included, including Tongonoxi, probably in that two and a half to four and a half, five million dollar range. And then the larger cities, up to ten million. We'll see if that's how it shakes out. The numbers weren't quite that specific out of Round One, but again, I'm just trying to relay what their staff has told to us. So, again, I think we'll be competitive because, again, the program is intended to be tied to a large economic development project. For us, prior to the Panasonic battery announcement, the Hill's Pet Nutrition was the largest private capital investment in the state, and definitely then within our region as well. And once you get beyond economic development projects, the very first eligible item on their presentation they do is infrastructure improvements related to that development or to a business park, which is exactly why we're asking for this. And again, why we're going to kind of rephrase the title of our application. Okay, so I know I've thrown a lot out there. If you want to reel it back to any level of discussion, I think what I was hoping to have is, is there a preference amongst the city council for Option One, Two, or Three for how we submit on the Base Grant? And those are the blanks that are in the resolution that's in the agenda packet.
Counsel, do you have any conversation regarding this?
Perfect. Thank you.
George, do you have a feel that we know we're going to have Option One costs? I mean, it may not be next week, but we're going to have Option One. It's that five point six four two million, and it could be higher, it could be lower, depending on the final cost, but we know we have that.
Yes.
It's just a matter of time.
Yeah.
So, does it, from the perspective of which one is most valuable for an application purpose, if we go with Option One, because a dollar's a dollar, it doesn't matter if it's asking for a five million dollar ask, or a four million dollar ask, or if we go with an Option One, which is a bigger project, a bigger cost to the city, but a lower amount of percentage ask for the grant, but higher than the next level down, which is if you do the math, you know, you feel there's a better chance for asking for the bigger one, but a lower percentage from the grant, but still higher than Option Number Two? Does that make sense?
Yes.
You know what? I actually followed exactly what you're asking. And that's what we're struggling with. So let me clarify just one thing. The reason Option One is higher is not because it includes anything as part of Phase Two, it just includes the soft costs associated with
It's still a cost.
One and 1A. Correct.
If we pay it to BG, or we pay it to Concrete, it's a dollar.
Yes.
Have we incurred or paid any of those costs yet?
We've approved those costs. So yes, we've not incurred them, dollar for dollar, but they are approved as of the last meeting. The other thing that this round, Base 2.0, if you do receive funds, you have to complete that project by June of two thousand twenty-five, which correlates very well with what our expected construction timeline is. But Mr. Donnelly, to go back to your question, I danced around it. I try to ask that direct question to Commerce staff, and they're just non-committal on it, other than, you know, what does the project overall cost look like, and where does your allocation fall with what your city's asking for, or what your entity is asking for?
Do we have any, any idea of the projects that were selected in 1.0, what their share percentage was?
Oh, I don't, all we know is their grant award amount. There's no detail offered.
The costs of there.
Project by project. The projects we saw for business parks and similar infrastructure improvements for cities or quasi-city entities were typically in the two to three million dollar range. So that's where the match amounts shown in Option One are a little higher than that, and we have half the pot of funding to pull from. So the strategy that could be behind Options Two or Three, getting between two and three, is you may be more palatable to the grant review.
Just to get something.
Correct.
But it sounds like you've been in recent contact with Commerce. You have a positive working relationship with them.
Yep.
The Hill's information would be new to our application.
Yes.
And we were passed over last time. And the one piece of feedback that you received was the match from the city, and that would also be new and corrected if we went with thirty-five percent contribution from the city with Option One.
Correct.
And based on cities our size, based on the question that was asked by another person, you said generally in the two to four million dollar range for communities in our size range.
Yeah, yeah. For the ask, for the grant match.
Yeah, for, yes. And so, based on what you shared with us, and by the way, this took a lot of work, so thank you for putting this together. It seems like Option One, but somewhere either a thirty-five percent city match, or forty, I hate to say that, but a forty percent city match, but maybe the thirty-five percent city match would show that more responsive feedback, making that direct tie to Hills, because you're right, it's still fresh in everybody's minds, might be the way to go. Because I agree with Chris, these will be our costs, and this meets so highly the main criteria for this grant.
Yep. The one other thing I'll add is during this first webinar for Round 2.0, they referenced having a matrix, a scoring matrix that they used. I don't recall seeing that, or that it was ever made available. So in the chat feature, someone beat me to the question and said, will we have an ability to see the scoring matrix? And I would say there was a very weak confirmation that that could be a possibility, whatever that means. So if they give us something, a matrix that shows a significant point allocation, if you go above thirty percent, or above thirty-five percent, you know, it might change, I guess, something of it. But when I'm looking at this, our total projects kind of in that, and this is the feedback we're getting from BG staff as well, Thaneul, Monaco's, they've worked with quite a few cities. I think only one of the cities they worked with received funding in the first go-around. And, you know, they're kind of in the same input and frustration level as us. It seems like we've checked every box. We'll make an improvement on our original application by adding a larger share of local match. We'll ensure that we have three letters of support. In fact, KCADC and LCDC have already submitted theirs. We're just waiting on Hills to submit a letter as well. I think we're doing everything they've asked of us. But I don't want to paint too rosy of a picture, because I thought we had an extreme, I thought we were really the poster child for the program in the first go-around. And as a reminder, no project in Leavenworth County got funding. But, you know, it was also Johnson County projects got like thirty-seven million dollars of the hundred million. And it was just an interesting way to look at the distribution list. And like I mentioned, Dan and I kind of scoured those to see were there any clues, and we'll make other adjustments on the verbiage and narrative based on what we think the evaluators of these applications are looking for. But if they give us a matrix tomorrow during that webinar that changes anything significantly, we can certainly ask for an adjustment. But I think even across these options, and even across the percentage allocations, I wouldn't say there's a huge amount of, or any sort of substantial difference. I mean, we're talking about a couple hundred thousand, maybe up to, you know, almost a little over five hundred thousand on one, but...
And three million was our ask last time that was told no, for the grant side. So all of Option One, grant share are north of three million, but Option Two, forty percent city, sixty percent grant is less, and then all of the Option Three options are less, for comparison's sake.
And so Option Three is probably the closest in dollar value to what we were working off of from cost projections. But you know how much work we've put in developing what we thought the cost was for Phase One a year ago versus what we went through budgeting and where we're at today. And again, including that additional 1A. Maybe Option One is a little too aggressive, and we can scale it back and look at the other two and just say, we can kind of hit the middle, and that we thought that was the sweet spot, and that's our best effort on it.
George is not option, if we use Option One, and then do your math on, with Option Three's lowest amount, I'm not proposing that, I'm just suggesting to that.
Yeah.
Our input, which is going to be our input anyways, our part of the deal, looks bigger.
Yeah.
So, does that have more of a value, that we are going to the table with more money as a percentage? Or does the size of the project, we don't know the scoring matrix, you obviously shared that.
Yeah.
It would seem to me that if we had Option One, and again, just for discussion purposes, and you used, we used the grant share of Option Three, which is two point three two five, and do the math on that, which is going to come up quick, do that, another million, that'd be somewhere around, ooh, high forties percent, would that look better? That we're asking for a lot lower percentage?
Yeah.
Because, you know, we're going to spend that same amount of money, doesn't matter what option. So does it make sense to pick a lower amount, but it's still higher than...
No, it's, again, it's a good question, and it's right online with what I was asking and trying to get their staff to differentiate between percentage and dollar amount. And the only thing I could get them to bite on was percentage amount. And again, somewhere above twenty-five, but less than fifty.
Anybody else who's going to be resubmitting will likely have increased cost from the time that it's lapsed till now.
Yeah.
I don't think, this would be the only project.
They're allowing all the way to two thousand nineteen as a look-back window to, you know, I, what I, what my gut is telling me is that they're looking at specific dollar amounts for a project that costs X, and then looking at the entity that's asking for those dollars, and where it's located. I mean, I would hope that since no project, if the previous analysis we gave the city council was based on how funds were allocated in Round One, and looking at the top seven counties in the state of Kansas from a population standpoint, Leavenworth County was the only county that struck out. And then within that, we thought we had one of the most competitive submittals. So we weren't asking ambiguous questions. We were asking very pointed questions because, again, it's in our interest. And it's great. Look, our worst position on this, our fallback, is we have five million in a low-interest rate loan. That's not a bad spot to be in. But I really think the intent of this project, and what we talked about with our state legislators, and I'll be reaching out to them to remind them that we're submitting, resubmitting again, and that was part of our discussion we had with them on the legislative agenda, work sessions with them, is, hey, you know, we're looking for as much support on this as we can get. I mean, we're going to, we'll do the three letters, we'll adjust our narrative, we'll do everything we can. But I wish there was a magic ball that says that. Now, again, tomorrow, if they give us the matrix and that creates any significant change in what we're presenting, we can certainly try to ask for a special meeting, or if it's not anything substantial, we can make some adjustments there. But I, you know, I don't think we can go wrong with any one, any one of these options. But, you know, I think one's But, you know, I, I think one's aggressive, three's kind of close to what we submitted the first time and maybe option two's kind of right, splitting the hairs right in the middle.
Okay, where are we landing, Council?
I think as, as Mr. Donnelly mentioned too, clearly the total cost of the project is five point six. So, that's the starting point. And from there, it's, how much are we willing, or not willing, how much are we proposing to take responsibility for on that? And I think, as was mentioned in the presentation, there's concerns maybe that if you go up too high, they'll say, oh, well, if you're going to give that much, clearly you don't need this extra grant. So whether that amount of the city's share is thirty-five or forty, I'm, I'm hedging towards thirty-five. And I think that shows a significant investment, uh, on behalf of the city. And it seem, seems to make, make some sense. That's where, that's where I'm falling.
I agree.
Mr. Donnelly?
Well, unfortunately, it's a game of politics that we have to play.
Yeah.
You did not bring your crystal ball tonight. Um, well, I'd like to make a motion, if you're asking for one.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with resolution oh one, two, three, oh three, uh, expressing the intent of the City of Tongonoxi, Kansas to apply for the Building Stronger Economy Base two point oh grant for the twenty twenty-three wastewater treatment plant improvement project. Uh, for moving forward with option one provided by the multiple options uh, before us for city staff for a total of, uh, five million, six hundred forty-two dollar, forty-two and six hundred dollars. Wait, I said that in a mixed up way, okay. Um, with the city's share, uh, matching, um, grant and that we'll be asking for of thirty-five percent and the grant share covering sixty-five percent. Is that adequate?
That sounds, that sounds good. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one. Another follow-up question and thought. What if, do we, do we think that there's any benefit of rounding the grant share to say three point five and having a nice round number that may show even a little bit more city investment and just gives a, a round number, so to speak, for them to consider?
Would you accept that friendly to your emet- your motion?
Um, show me what, show me.
George, Dan, do you think, I mean, wha- what did you guys see in, in one point oh? Were they round numbers? Were they all across the board?
They were usually round numbers, but there were a few exact, but getting to a easily recognizable number. It's probably a good idea.
So.
Thirty-eight percent and then some fraction would get us to asking for three point five million.
Okay.
Or maybe thirty-seven point nine.
How do you all feel about that? Thumbs up, okay. And then I will amend my motion to that everything is the same except for, uh, the grant will have matching funds from the city and we'll be requesting three point five million dollars for the base grant.
Sounds good. Is the second still standing?
Yes.
All right. Um, Mr. Porter, will you call the roll on the vote, please?
Mr. Partridge?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. McCutcheon? All ayes, motion carries, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item B, consider author- authorization to proceed with surveying and engineering services associated with twenty twenty-three North Star subdivision sidewalk extension project. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm just going to bring up an image to focus everyone's attention on, um, the location of this project. So, um, this item was brought forward last year during our budget development process as a capital project idea for use of street maintenance funding to help fund the connection of two existing sidewalks that I'll reference on the screen here you'll see. Uh, Main Street between Myers Drive and North Star Court currently has a significant amount of right-of-way on the east and west side of that Main Street, but there is no sidewalk connection running north and south um, along the west side of Main Street, which you can see following my cursor on the screen. Uh, this amount of span is a little under four hundred feet, three hundred and seventy-six feet measured. And a project would involve the construction of a sidewalk as well as two connecting ramps to, um, uh, make ADA accessibility at each intersection. Uh, the project was approved in the, um, twenty twenty-three approved budget. The first part, which we're asking for your a- uh, approval to move forward with tonight, uh, is to engage BG consultants to do a right-of-way staking. And, um, based on that staking, the city's public works director, Kent Heskett, and BG staff would be able to ascertain if there's any need for additional property or if the grading and topography of the site, uh, generally allow for our public works department to complete that project uh, without any, um, land acquisition needs. Um, we just request a simple motion to authorize engaging with BG to complete this survey and an assessment. And we'll complete, continue to provide you all with updated costs and plans for the project as we go through this year. But just kicking it off with this step tonight. Happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Any questions?
We're sure, we're sure we'll need one. Now, what, that backs up, and it always has backed up when the water's high and when it rains and we don't want sidewalks that are already underwater. That wouldn't make a lot of sense.
I'm glad that we can be, sorry, I'm glad that we can be responsive to the citizens' concerns in this area because the kids, uh, kids were walking in the drainage ditch, that kind of thing. I can make a motion to proceed with the surveying and engineering services associated with, uh, twenty twenty-three North Star subdivision sidewalk extension project.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stevens. Uh, get, ju- just want to address Chris's question real quick. The surveying will prevent the water from backing up in somebody's patio, correct?
If we put something in there, will it, where will it be?
Right.
Will it be in the low part and the high part? They, that's exactly the elevation. It'll tell us what that is.
Okay, great, thank you. We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to resolution zero one, twenty-three, zero four, offering this, is authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation renewal temporary notes, series two thousand twenty-three A of the city of Tongonoxi, Kansas. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. So, last meeting, the city council approved a decision to move forward with, um, contacting a list of local and regional banks to extend, uh, an RFP for, um, a private placement loan that would replace the city's existing twenty twenty-two C temp notes uh, used to finance the construction phase of the city's water tower construction project. Uh, a necessary step in our timeline that you'll recall from the calendar that was shared um, as part of the presentation materials by Ben Hart with Baker Tilly is the adoption of the resolution before you tonight. This resolution authorizes the offering for sale of, uh, twenty twenty-three A, which would be the upcoming loan agreement. And if you'll remember from that calendar, we expect to be back February sixth with the, um, bids and a recommendation from the city's financial advisor and city staff on, um, an amount and, and a proposal to, uh, move forward with. Our backstop date and the reason we're advancing this part tonight and the sale in the first meeting in February is we do have the end of February as our deadline for, uh, the renewal date of those temp notes that are currently on our books. So, happy to take any questions you have, but the city's, um, bond council, Gilmore and Bell provided this resolution and it's been reviewed by our financial advisor and city staff as well. So, uh, again, happy to take questions you have.
Any questions? Seeing none, I accept a motion.
I'd make a motion. We approve resolution number zero one, twenty-three, zero four. Resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation renewal temporary notes, series twenty twenty-three A of the city of Tongonoxi.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. Partridge first.
Dang.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
You got the big one at the end, Jake.
My breath.
All right. Item B, resolution zero one, twenty-three, zero five. Consider approval of city grant of easement to Evergy for load center at Tongonoxi Business Park. Uh, Mr. Brackovich?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, this is a submittal that is, uh, accurately reflected in the way you described it. Uh, we've been working with Evergy since late August. Um, they're looking to build a load center. And if you're not familiar with that, it's something smaller than electrical substation. So, the substation is what you're, you typically see when you're driving around. It's in enclosed and it's got transformers and, and a bunch of equipment. The load center and, uh, subsequently the amount of easement they're asking for, which is approximately zero point two acres, is up on the ridge. There is an access road that goes to a communications tower. If you think about where we're building our new elevated water tank, it's across that access road. So, I mentioned they submitted in August. We've been kind of going back and forth with designing our water tower and where our water lines go and where Evergy's going to bring in overhead lines and how it comes to sit in this load center. And it's just taken that long between our city engineering group and Evergy's engineering group to get the, to the documents that are submitted tonight. Um, we're recommending moving forward, um, there's a few, uh, there's going to be, I'll, I'll give an update later on Ever. Uh, I'm sorry, another easement that's on Unilock's property. Um, Evergy's got some big plans to increase, um, the, not only redundancy but power that's available in the area. Um, they, they deliver power there now, but to use their term of art, it's kind of an end-of-the-line type of delivery. It doesn't, that kind of power doesn't extend beyond the site. And so, this will make the park, uh, that much more attractive to have both the load center servicing and a future substation servicing. But, uh, this item is specifically for the load center and, uh, I believe there's an easement in there that, for the overhead lines as they come through, uh, the existing, uh, I'll call it the east side of the business park property, the stuff we haven't developed yet. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions, Council?
That overhead line, that's the section to the, it would be north, right?
It is on the, uh, yes, on the north side of the, of our, uh, eighty acre balance, yes.
Any other questions? If not, I'd, I'd accept a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, uh, for resolution oh one, two, three, oh five to approve the c- city grant easement to Evergy for their load center at the Tongonoxi Business Park.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item E, resolution zero one, twenty-three, zero six. Consider approval of city recording utility easement at Tongonoxi Business Park. Mr. Brackovich?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So, again, this is related to the water line installation that we did. When we originally platted the business park, we anticipated service coming to some of our users, uh, would come down, our line that would come down, Kansas Avenue, would cut across certain lots, including the detention basin easement or running right outside of that. The, the service lines, um, we decided to go a different route with that and we beefed up our existing line to that twelve-inch line. And so, this is simply recording accurately the easement in which we placed our water line.
Thank you, Mr. Brackovich. Are there any questions? If not, I'd accept a motion at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution oh one, two, three, oh six to approve the city recording utility easement at Tongonoxi Business Park.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Moving to item F. Consider approval of two thousand twenty-three fire department and codes department F two fifty vehicle procurement. Mr. Porter?
Sorry, one, one quick question after. Go and make sure we approve those. Why don't we just give them the land on that easement on the point, what, two acres, which is basically a city lot and then tax them on it? Because we basically gave them an easement and they control the land anyways.
They control the land anyways.
They have an easement all over the entire property and so they're in basic control.
Isn't that point two?
No, it's a, it's a, so it's not like a, a right-of-way or anything. I mean, it is a prescribed easement for a singular use, which I think they could be exempt from anyway, from, if you're talking about property tax.
Because they, they have the easement over the whole lot, basically. That's what, what it says, which I understand that. So anyways, I was just kind of curious.
They, they shouldn't.
Tax them on it.
No, they, i- if it, and we'll, we'll do a final review on the documents before we sign it, but it shouldn't say that it's an easement across the entire, it's a, it's a prescribed easement for that specific footprint, just the zero point two acres.
No, no, that's, and that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. Now, they'll ask for an additional easement because from that load center, they'll need to have overhead lines that go along that ridge to the south location of Unilock, run along the south edge of the Unilock property to wherever they're going to locate a substation in the future on that south side. Yeah, so, yeah.
Totally understand. I'll, I'll get with you on that.
Okay.
Um, I apologize for moving too fast, Mr. Donnelly.
That's right, thank you.
Uh, okay, on the item F, uh, that's Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor, and our chief, John Zummelman, is also here tonight, so I'll invite him up to the podium if he has any comments. I'll do a quick summary. Um, the agenda statement included in the agenda packet shows, um, the summary of the quote provided for your attention tonight from Laird Knoller for an F two fifty four by four crew cab vehicle. Uh, that vehicle was included in the approved twenty twenty-three budget to, um, support the functions of the fire department and code enforcement, um, efforts as that, uh, role is currently fulfilled by our deputy chief, um, fire marshal position, John Callahan. Um, this vehicle replacement was budgeted for a little less than the quote provided, but as I'm sure Chief could share with you, um, getting quotes and getting assurances that equipment will be available in the current fiscal year is next to impossible. And so, we're thankful that he was able to find this proposal to, uh, submit for your attention. Uh, I'm happy to take any other questions you have about the procurement side, but I'll turn it over to Chief if you want to offer any comments.
I believe there's eleven dealerships on there that bid different vehicles. Um, we went through that. What we based our finances off and our, uh, thought process on the budget cycle was off the twenty twenty-two bids and that was from November, I'm sorry, November of twenty twenty-one. By the time they get back to the cycle to where we can start trying to get vehicles, it was twenty twenty-two. Going into twenty twenty-three, uh, vehicles went up almost ten percent, um, across the board. And what we found out too drastically was dealerships, uh, rebates that they were getting back, selling fleet were either taken away from them completely by most dealerships and/or, um, just so minimal that we actually went to Laird Knoller and Laird Knoller gave us a better price than what we could get through Mark. Um, basically because we've done business with them for years. Um, so that's, that's where we came up with this bid price. And actually, they were, um, about a thousand dollars cheaper than the cheapest one we could find on the mark pricing as of twenty twenty-three, January one, so.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Are there any questions?
No, thank you for your patience for the rest of this meeting, though. And this was already approved in, in the budget for this year, so I don't think, I don't, I don't have any questions.
Any other questions? If not, I would accept a motion.
I'd make a motion. We authorize staff to purchase an F two fifty vehicle for fire department and codes department for an amount not to exceed fifty-one oh four six.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Par- Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to Item G. Consider approval of purchase of skid steer and street milling attachment for the Public Works Department. Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's presentation, I'm going to serve as Mr. Hesket and Mr. Porter, just in case there are any questions. Mr. Hesket's out of town this evening and unavailable. So to give you a quick update on this, it's a second piece of equipment that was included in our 2023 adopted budget, skid steer and what's called a milling attachment. And just for your information, a milling attachment is what the equipment uses to chew up asphalt in replacement or waterline breaks or any sort of other activity to fix street conditions, to remove what's there in whatever condition it is. A big improvement of this year's milling attachment proposal, too, is it almost doubles in size from 16 inches wide to 30 inches wide. And I know our staff and the Public Works Department are thrilled at the improved ability of their equipment in the case that this is approved and purchased this year. So to give a quick update of our procurement process, we did contact three vendors and the results of those bids and purchase price and trade-in value offered are listed below. What we did find, though, was that we had a set of kind of unique responses. And so in an effort to better summarize those, we've illustrated in the Agenda Statement's matrix a rating system with the higher number being better, a one-to-three scale of the factors of price, adherence to the city's adopted budget expenditure authority, staff testing rating, which was completed by our multiple people on city staff who visited each vendor, demoed the equipment and looked at factors like visibility out of the cab or just other small nuances to using the equipment in the most safe, effective and cost-effective manner. Another item of the rating system was product availability. The John Deere item in particular had an ETA of 10 to 11 months, whereas the other two products offered by Case and Bobcat could be obtained as soon as tomorrow. So there is a big difference in the three quotes in that regard. Trade-in value as well. We weren't able to achieve a trade-in value for the Bobcat. They weren't interested in our 2003 piece of equipment, but the other two vendors did provide actually differing trade-in values at $10,000 and $20,000 of credit. So as you can see in the summary, the total rating of the Case was the highest rating at 13. Bobcat was second at 11 and John Deere was third, and quite significantly so, at only 7. When staff reviewed the rating matrix and the price, their recommendation in the Public Works Department is that we move forward with the Case, which is through a company called VLP in terms of the purchase quote. And that includes a purchase price of a little over $103,700, but it also includes a $20,000 trade-in value that, in Mr. Hesket's opinion, to quote him, he believes that's advanced ahead of what we would receive on a site like Purple Wave that he's monitored, you know, in the last several months for what similar equipment prices look like right now. And so the budget authorization included in the budget was an expense only of $95,000 between the Capital Projects Fund, the Sewer Capital Fund and the Water Capital Fund. The total price, including the trade-in, would be less than that at only $83,787.60. And that does include the skid steer or skid loader as well as the milling attachment I described. The quotes are included in the agenda packet for reference. And again, the recommendation is to move forward with the Case-VLP purchase option. If you have any questions, George or I would be happy to take those. Thank you.
Any questions, counsel? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize staff to purchase skid and steer and milling attachment from VLP for an amount not to exceed $83,788.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Which brings us to the city manager agenda and the 2022/12 financial report. Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief, but again, stop me if you have any questions at any point. The financial report included in the packet and printed on the dais for your attention is in substantial completion for the entirety of the 2022 fiscal year. We do, during our audit process, anticipate there being one slight correction. In the last two years, we've had a small journal entry for interest earnings on a CD that the city maintains and has maintained for many years. And so that was not incorporated in our year-end process, but we do anticipate mentioning it to the auditors and it coming before you at that point in time for your consideration at the audit report. Through 100% of our fiscal year, we did collect over 100%, 107% of revenue estimates across all funds. And we spent 86% of our expenditure budget authority across all funds. Our ARPA funds, we do maintain $765,858.42. And our next annual report on what the use of those funds has been as a city called a non-entitlement unit is due in April of this year. And we'll continue to monitor that and make sure we submit that in proper time. Through 2022, we completed four budget amendments, and those are listed in the summary page for reference. And at the council's recent request, we also added to this financial report a section detailing our current and trends of past investment earnings and deposit earnings on city deposits. So we'll highlight that in just a moment. Pages two and three of the report, let me skip to them here on the screen, demonstrate major fund revenues for the prior year, current year, through December, and then the, I'm sorry, year through the end of December 2022 in the 2022 budget. And you can see good trends in the water and sewer funds as well as the general fund in that regard. Major fund expenditures also saw some increased expenditure levels in the general fund, water and sewer operations fund, and also paralleled the revenue picture for the special highway and the city's debt bond and interest fund. On the utility side, for capital funds, you can see illustrated on the two charts, revenues and expenditures, again showing the same comparison. Finally, the next page of the report demonstrates the city's sales tax, city sales and use tax in the general fund and infrastructure sales tax fund, which each collect a respective 1% and .75% interest on all applicable purchases. And then the city's share of the Leavenworth County sales tax, which is demonstrated for the Capital Projects Fund income levels. One thing I would highlight in those is that we saw continued strong trends that really continued unabated through the end of the fiscal year. Our net amount above budget in the general fund was 38%, a little more, over 38% above budget, and a net of 15% in the general fund above last year's mark. So we saw continued growth. And we're actually scheduled to participate in a training session later this month at how to better analyze city sales and use tax data and what we're allowed and not allowed to reveal from the state portal. So there have been discussions in the past that that's something we should do more analysis and presentation on. And so we hope, once we complete that training session, we'll be able to take it to the limit essentially of what we can share with you and with the general public about that information from the state. The Capital Projects, city share of the county sales tax is a net 19% above budget for 2022 and a net 10% above the prior year. And that, again, is really strong and impressive trends that we're happy to see continuing and not dropping off as we had a very volatile year last year and the general economy and price fluctuations as well. So the next page of the report details what's titled a section on investment earnings, and it's split into two pages. The first page is outlining for city deposits. And by that, we're defining that as the city's public funds interest checking account, currently held with First State Bank and Trust, and listed there as the balance as of the end of this fiscal year, as well as that certificate of deposit that I mentioned that is actually of somewhat unknown origin. And we may look at options this year to clean that up and make a change with that because it predates all staff and possibly some on the council of what the intent of that investment was at a prior time. So illustrated in the table is, for each of those, the 2022 annual interest earnings as well as the end-of-the-year annual percentage yield interest rate offered through those deposits. The reference in the deposits heading above on the page outlines just sort of generally and with definitions the prescription and state statute for how the city may and should hold its deposits and operate those. We don't currently have an investment and deposit management policy. That is something that some cities have, especially those larger than us, always do for the most part. And so that is something, if we're identifying future projects and improvements, that would be a good target to do and formalize those deposit management actions that we take. Also illustrated is a monthly graph at the bottom of the page on deposits showing the annual percentage yield. And it's interesting to note that the low was at the beginning of the year in January at 0.16% and the high is the end of the year at 3.54%. So just for your reference, that's the amount of change we've seen. And at least in the last five years, that's by far the biggest shift in a one-year period in that rate of return. The next page of the report on investments is being defined as investment of idle funds to time deposits, open accounts and other types of accounts and holdings. The city does use the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. And the Poold Money Investment Board is who manages that. And it's comprised of the state treasurer and four people appointed by the state governor as well. This is really common in cities of all sizes in the state of Kansas. And the Poold Money Investment Board gives us opportunities to invest securely funds from bond proceeds in particular. There are some stipulations that the KMAP, the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool, be utilized as the depository for those funds. And then that allows the state treasurer to do things like refinancing and other withdrawals or deposits with more ease because it's their state system, for instance. We're also not required to pledge securities to cover these deposits. They're fully covered in all full-dollar amount. So looking at our current investment balances, you can see that we had four during 2022 that I outlined, though current balances as of the end of the year only maintain funds in the general debt service account used to fund debt payments made throughout the year on GO bonds and temp notes. And then our temp notes 2022C special account, which again, as a debt issuance, was maintained in the KMAP account specialized for that, which eases in auditing and tracking. And so when we looked at the debt issuance for 2022A, B, and C, our auditors agreed that we ought to maintain unique funds and KMAP for those. And we do follow that practice. We list investment earnings and the annual percentage rate, which is currently standing at 3% for those funds. And then the annual percentage rate trends by month are illustrated in the graph at the bottom. The range from the year started at 0.002% in January and reached 3% by the end of the year. Our average over the year, just in case you're curious how that works out, is a little over 1%. So it is a conservative investment, but it does offer us the greatest amount of flexibility in making our required debt service payments and other bond transactions as well as eliminates the need for a local deposit holder to pledge securities to cover the amount not covered by the FDIC, $250,000.
It'll make a nice budget windfall this year, won't it?
Well. Exactly. Any questions on that new section of the report? I'm sorry, I went through it quickly. Okay. Major expenditures detail, the general fund on the next page shows a total percent of budget as 97.7%. But the total percent of our legal budget authority in the state budget forms for expenses was only at 70, just under 79% through the end of the fiscal year. So we were a little closer than usual, but especially in a year with revenues outpacing budget, that's a good position to be at year-end to avoid adding too quickly to fund balance in that fund. Moving on in the report, the project tracker for the water tower project is not showing anything new. In the last two months, we haven't completed any pay-ups. And so the report contents in that regard are the same, that we're just over $1 million paid on that project, which represents about 34% of our contracts with Caldwell Tanks. Our budget initiatives list from 2022 on the next page, fully completed at the end of the year. We're excited that so many initiatives could move forward on schedule and in substantial completion, at least for the most part. Our 2023 budget, the budget books are printed and available at the dais for you to take home or leave here. If you'd like it to be left here, you're welcome to keep it and we'll just set it in the back room. We've published the budget as well on the city website in the Flipping Book online format, which allows us to track a little bit the usage and reference that people make to it. But happy that that came out well and appreciate the work that all staff put into supporting the development of the budget and the budget book itself, too, and the council's work as well. The final sections of the report are expenditure budget authority spent by fund, fund balance report that we present every month, and then finally, the quarter four treasures report as the last page, which illustrates beginning and ending balances with receipts and dispersments for all funds and then the outstanding debt by debt obligation for the city. And that will be published as required in the Tonkinoxi mere soon. So apologies for a lengthy report, but to sum it up, we're really excited at how we ended 2022 and still see strong financial performance starting in 2023. So happy to move forward and happy to make edits to the report. We've evolved it a lot in the last year. And if you have other feedback on what you like, don't like, would like to see different, always happy to take that into account. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Porter. This is a lot of work. I really appreciate it.
At first glance, you're moving all the interest income into general fund. We're not segregating it by fund?
That's been the practice, yes, except for debt proceeds, which do need to remain in the debt proceeds fund. Sometimes those are accounted for to meet cost of issuance or other associated pro forma outlines. I'm sorry.
I don't see that.
It's not a budgeted fund. It's a non-budgeted fund. Yeah.
I had a quick question on that. I know it's just $151.32, but I mean, why not just make the journal entry? I don't understand why you wait for the auditor. Or why you wait for the auditor?
It isn't even reconciled. The reason it requires that step is it has not traditionally been reconciled with the.
Do you get a bank statement?
Sometimes. We get a renewal notice.
What's the bank?
So it is First State Bank. So there used to be two CDs. One was misattributed to the city that actually belonged to the local, the city's Fireman Relief Association. So that half of it was cleared up a year or two ago, and we need to knock this one out, too. It's a CD with about $60,000 in it. But again, the origin or the intended use, we haven't been able to locate or the bank. So we're a little at a loss about.
Okay. Well, $151 is like the definition of trivial, so it's totally fine. But I'm going to also say this. I would recommend adopting an investment policy. That's something you're seeing across the board. I know it's not probably statutory required, obviously, but you might find in a couple of years, if you don't have one, your auditor will recommend it. So I might be thinking about it now.
Certainly. We have a start in some regards in that George and myself and the city treasurer have some resolutions adopted when we all started employment that allow us to participate in the KMAP system and give us some basic abilities, but that there isn't a level of policy yet developed. But it's a good point, Mr. Partridge. We should do that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Porter. Update on Unilock grant of easement to Evergy. Mr. Brackovich?
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. So just real quickly, we touched, or I touched on it a little bit earlier. This is related to Evergy needing an easement or right-of-way on the south side of the property to run lines to a future substation. Under normal circumstances, Unilock, as the. Under normal circumstances, Unilock, as the property owner, would simply sign off on that. However, in our development agreement with Unilock, the city has reversionary interest in half of that property, or about 15 acres on the south side, and so they can't grant or sell or sublease any part of that property without our written permission. And so what's in the packet tonight is a letter that Anna drafted that I can sign and send to Unilock that says the city is fine with the granting of this particular easement to Evergy. And so we're just recommending moving forward with it. It's kind of informational piece unless you all might have some different questions about it.
Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brekovich. Item I, the city attorney agenda, Miss Kershulich?
I don't have any items, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Item J, mayor pro tem agenda?
I don't have any items either.
Thank you. Item K is city council agenda. Any items from city council?
No.
And item L, do we do anything, need to do anything more than just remind people to look at their email?
Mayor, you might want to convene for maybe five or 10 minutes if you want. We can do that?
Hello. Okay. I move that the city council recesses into executive session to discuss the city manager's annual review process pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected exception KSA 75-43119B1. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 8:12, or no, 8:17. The session will include city attorney, city assistant manager, council, city council, not the city manager, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're now in executive session.
You do any magical work at all?
It is accounted. It's in a non-budgeted debt proceeds fund. It's not a kind of state budgets. We budget for it in every debt issuance income expectation, but we just don't call it on the city budget because we don't want to know what an issuance might be the exact earnings. So like when we do an issuance...
But it's still a source of revenue.
I usually wouldn't care that much if Mike didn't realize that council was on Tuesday, and so he invited people over to watch.
Yeah. And that's back to...
No, you'll be back. And it's like, I mean, we never know. I go, I looked, and there's nothing like, you know, that would bring out a crowd of protesters or any of this stuff. Somebody texted me, oh, God, this stuff is dry. No, I really find it interesting.
Yeah. I'll take that piece of paper.
The sale documents.
Oh, this one. Okay.
Yeah. And it's going back where it's... It's amazing the transformation of this whole month.
Okay. It's 8:17. We're back in regular session. Let the record show that no binding action was taken in the executive session. One last thing, I attended the, and Mr. Dale was there last night, too, the opening of the gym, the ribbon cutting. That is a fantastic facility, and they've done a wonderful job, and it was a really neat atmosphere, and it's going to be great for years to come.
And the boys team got a win.
Got a W. Yeah. That's cool. All right. Mr. Dale.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?